Yes.
We got a number of things with executive session also.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we'll go into our regular meeting first and then we'll move into executive session. But our first, we have two items for work session this afternoon. The first item is a discussion on the Orange Street rezoning. That item will be under first reading tonight at planning, I mean, City Council Planning Commission. Those are my old days. And so we had had some questions that came in from the neighborhood since the planning commission. And so we thought we would brief this item in work session. And then that way, if you have any questions, then we'll be ready for when we go into the regular agenda tonight. Knowing especially that there were a few questions, especially as it relates to the density and to the traffic. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael Fredson, who is our planner that oversees long range planning for the city. He's our senior planner, the principal planner that oversees long range planning. And he and Mary Douglas, who is our interim planning director, are going to go through the presentation. And please feel free to ask us any questions as we move forward on this first item. So, Michael?
Sure. Um, this is a request to rezone about a half acre property at 108 Brute Street. Um, and RHC, which is one of our single family districts, to RNA, which is our lowest density multi-family district. Uh, and so this, this application was heard at our last spending meeting. And prior to that, was public notice. So all property owners within 500 feet received a written notice. And it was also presented at our project review meeting earlier this year. So this is just a overview of the property. As you can see in the upper right hand corner, it is currently zoned RHC. Uh, some of the other properties, Long, Orange Street, are zoned RNA, which is what this parcel is asking to go to. Um, some of the other properties further down Orange Street, comparing up to Welter, are zoned RHC also. And we'll talk about those here in just a moment. And then it backs up to property that's zoned residential community two. Um, but that, that property is accessed more than Foster Street, um, further down the hill. So, um, there's really no direct access to that RC property from, from that street. So, um, let's see, go to the next slide please. This parcel is part, also on the top right corner of the screen. This parcel is a part of the Bruton Town Special Emphasis Neighborhood. And that's one of our neighborhoods that's kind of split between the city and the county. Rutherford Road kind of is that dividing line. And the, most of the properties that were in the city limits for Bruton Town received at least some form of that multifamily designation. The RC two is the most intensive of those, but the RNA, which is what these ones, uh, this parcel is requesting to go to, allows it to four units per lot. And this is what we're looking for with gentle density, trying to get some of that missing middle housing. In terms of the form-based code requirements, it's about the same size as what a single family house could be built to. So in terms of the width and the height of the house, um, those four units cannot be bigger than what is permitted in, in that, like a RC, uh, RHC district. So in terms of the size of the structure that can go over there, it's, it's the same and consistent. So the units might be a little bit smaller, it could be like a duplex or quadplex. Um, but really in terms of the mass of building that can go on that lot, it's the same as our, ours, many of our RH districts.
Did you go back there last time though, that was the neighborhood zone?
Yes. And so, and I myself.
Oh, your presentation.
Um, so one thing I'll point out is these houses on Welter Street, many of them are actually duplexes. And when our consultants did the, and those are offices in RHC, so we'll finish that sentence. Um, when our consultants did the initial conversion as a part of the zoning for the citywide zoning map, they took, uh, most of the R six properties and their starting point was moving those over to the RHC district. So that was kind of that, you know, comparison, what was under the previous LMO and moving to the new Greenville Development Code. That R six was more or less the equivalent of our new RHC district. These duplexes and this, uh, Orange Street parcel, which is up for rezoning, were for reasons that predate, um, the, the current planning staff, were zoned R six under the previous land management ordinance. So even if those duplexes were to be redeveloped, they could have only gone to, um, a single family residence under the previous zoning. So we're kind of doing this as a cleanup to match the Bruton Town Special Emphasis Neighborhood. Where we do want to see some of that, um, that missing middle housing, which is part of our city's affordable housing strategy. And be able to bring some of these units and parcels and vacant parcels, especially along Orange Street, along for, for kind of that, that price point that's more affordable and especially help flush out these special emphasis neighborhoods. So, um, we did receive some inquiries, um, let's see if you can pop forward a few slides. Keep going. One more. Yeah, so we got quite a few inquiries from some of the property owners facing, uh, Mountain View, West Mountain View. Um, just as to the status of Orange Street. It's, it's a narrower road, it has, um, a right away that's not as wide as like a new street might be constructed to today. And they expressed, uh, concerns about, you know, as, as these lots are developed, what are the plans to widen and improve, uh, Orange Street? And so as development happens, or development code does have requirements in terms of right away dedication and improving those streets and along the extent of that development. And then, um, really once you reach a critical mass, is when the city might come in, um, and, you know, fill in those gaps and, and improve that street and work at the stormwater improvements along the street and just kind of complete those improvements that might need to be done. We, uh, had some traffic counts taken along Orange Street. And as you can see, um, further down towards the Rutherford side, on this side of the curve, uh, we counted six gay vehicles per day, um, over the course of that week. And, uh, once you go a little bit farther east, where you get past Welter, there were about 73 vehicles per day that were going up and down, um, up and down Orange Street. So it, it's a tight road, um, the traffic counts are fairly low. And, um, and you know, development, more eyes on the street, developments happening along this will, you know, improve, uh, you know, visibility, create more eyes on the street, one of our planning concepts, and, uh, help to slow traffic down. Um, we didn't see a whole lot of traffic, uh, speeding violations through there. And we looked at some of that data before this application to planning commission. Um, but that was one of the concerns that we did hear from the neighborhood, the speeding up and down of Orange Street. So, um, I don't know if, uh, if there's any specific questions about the street or right away, um, friends in engineering or anyone.
I, I was just going to make a couple of points.
Yeah.
Um, when you go back to the, the zoning of all Orange Streets, go one more back. You'll notice that, I'm sorry, stand up. You'll notice that all of these, this is all Orange Street here, and all of these are RNA. And so what they're doing is pulling in this to conform with all of Bruton Town there. And then, and then Michael hit on another point that, um, Orange Street, Orange Street, um, really doesn't have anyone living on it other than like two homes. And so, you know, I've been a huge proponent, talking to developers, talking to other landowners about starting to build homes on Orange Streets so that we can get more eyes on Orange Streets so that we can increase safety for the residents on Orange Street and really for that whole area.
So nobody lives on the west side?
There's one home, there are two homes, there might be two homes on the left hand side. Um, and then there are, there are a number of homes, uh, east of, um, Welter.
With, with the topo of that lot, is the developer or designer went, put four units on there?
He does not have plans right now, but the zoning allows up to four.
Okay.
With the four base requirements that Michael was talking about, they may not be able to fit physically this.
Well, especially if you're putting a driveway in, and I'd just say it's very difficult to develop that with that kind of, it's a bitchy but drop.
Yeah.
It's pretty sweet.
And it could be a single family home that goes there because that's allowed too, under RNA.
So, so he doesn't have a plan yet, but he's requesting this?
That's correct.
So they felt, that was speaking.
Yeah, I think it is a plan.
So, so I've talked to, I know the family really well and talked to them a number of times. And, and they, they felt like when we did the LMO to no fault of anyone, but they felt like when the LMO was done, that they should have been brought in with the rest of Bruton Town to the west. Um, but, you know, said, hey, let's just redo this after the LMO is passed and we can, we can address this. So they felt like that should have been part of the rest of Bruton Town. It wasn't. Um, and then I talked to them and, an interesting story, and I, I hope it's okay for me to, I'm the landowner, agree me to share this, but, um, there, I don't know how many years ago, Mayor, uh, but, uh, this is, this is Will Mecklenburg, this is Mike Mecklenburg.
Right, of course, yeah.
Yeah, and, um.
And he lives on West Mountain View, so.
Yes, he's on, he's at 140 West Mountain View.
He's at 140?
West Mountain View.
Okay.
And so anyway, what's interesting is there was a house on that lot, the green lot right there, that, um, had criminal activity and how he put it was, there were people that would show up randomly at night, like 20 people or whatever, doing drugs and doing things that you shouldn't be doing. And, um, and they honestly just, just said, you know, they work with law enforcement and law enforcement helped take care of that. But then the Mecklenburg just said, you know, well, let's, let's make an offer to the landowner. And they bought the land, raised the house, and so they've just sat on it for the last, I don't know, 15, 15 or so years. But I did talk to him and, and they're very honest brokers and they just said, we don't have any plans to just felt that we should be part of informing to the rest of Bruton Town.
Okay.
Other residents.
We're in the back.
Yes, my life from climb out, yes. Yes.
So, all right, so Mary Douglas, you, you touched on this. In, in the zoning, in the perfect world, it would be allowed based on the acreage, four units. But realistically, given the topo, given the narrowness of the lot, we think maybe two, but they could go up. Like they could do two duplexes or something like that, in theory. I mean, you could have four families living if you use like a missing middle housing design there.
As long as they need our height and our setbacks and all of the restrictions in the box.
Okay. Um, and if down the road, uh, traffic concerns became a concern, a bigger concern, we have all, we're. I'm sorry, it's hard to see from climb out. I'll slide ahead. Um, our usual option, like we own Orange, we could do speed tables, we could do whatever we want to do there. I'm curious, how does police and fire, any of y'all know how to get a fire truck around that bend? In that, in that.
It's the road street.
But I will, I will say though, sorry chief, I will say that, that on, without solicitation, Will Mecklenburg said, he, sorry, Will owns, I'm going to point it out, you want to show it?
Is he 140 or?
He also owns, hold on, and then he also owns this right here. So Orange comes, our left turn, he owns this. And without solicitation, Will said, hey, you know, if this street starts to pop up some homes, I'm willing to give up some land so our emergency vehicles can more easily get through there.
It's a dicey draw, no doubt about it. For responders and public works, I don't know how they do it, but, all right, and then. Also my husband, I'm not sure, but in terms of stormwater, it's just running into the woods on that, right? We don't have any stormwater collection points along there, I assume.
No, it, it drains to the north on that map, towards Foster Street. More than just a single family house, probably trigger a major stormwater permit for more quality.
I mean, I know there's a concern expressed about parking on the street and all those things. And I guess what I'm, the point I'm trying to make is with, even with those concerns, that those concerns played out, because we own this street and because of the tools we have in traffic calming and in the latitude to restrict downstreet parking, for example, those concerns could be dropped down the road if four families moved into that lot, I mean, the way I see it. Great, thank you.
Any other questions on this item? All right, thank you very much, Mary Douglas and Michael. We will have this item under first review, um, at our formal meeting at 5:30. Next up tonight, we have the Greenville Zoo updates. And I'd like to welcome Bill Cooper, who is our zoo administrator, as well as Tara Aker, who's our PRT director. Uh, and we have some fun things to talk about related to the zoo tonight. Um, and I don't want to steal their thunder, but I will just say that we have our preliminary, um, reports back and things are looking great, especially from where we were, if y'all recall, four years ago, um, as we went into AZA accreditation. So Bill and Tara and Brandon, um, I will let you all take it from here. And, but we're very excited to hear some of the, of the good news. And I just love, I love, these are my favorite slides ever, and there is a red panda slide in there, everyone knows. The red pandas are my absolute favorite.
They're setting the tone.
They're setting the tone. All right, Brandon?
Thank you, Shannon. Uh, just to reiterate, uh, this update is going to give you a snapshot of the accreditation, uh, process as well as the government study for RSNS. The, uh, report from the visiting committee for AZA was overwhelming in quantity. And, uh, and Bill, and Bill shared a lot about that.
And, and before we get into that, this is just the report from the preliminary review. So for our media partners in the room, it's not the official report. This, the official report and the accreditation will be later this fall. This is just our preliminary report that we received back from the visit. So I just want to make sure that that's abundantly clear before anything gets put out into the public. Okay, sorry, Brandon.
All right. What's that?
So it's a pleasure to be here this evening, um, with some good news. So, um, I'll start off with kind of the basics. Uh, Association of Zoos and Aquariums, they represent the gold standard in animal welfare, animal health care. Um, they are the front-running accrediting body and have been so for over 40 years. When they do a deep dive into your business operations and your, uh, complete operations, they look at your conservation plan, they look at your research plan, they look at your finances, they look at your staffing, your organization. Imagine you, you got this big checklist and you're checking all the boxes. Did they do a conservation plan? That conservation plan is 30 pages long. Did they do an after? So we, we checked all the boxes for everything that, that, that will wire us, um, including our, our physical facilities, which look fantastic, our sa- security and safety, uh, our training. Uh, again, finance governing body, they, they did a deep dive into all of that. And, uh, they were happy with what they found. So, um, it's, it's worth noting that, uh, 10% of the 2,800 facilities licensed to, uh, house animals, uh, only about, uh, 10% of them had this accreditation. So, uh, uh, it's very difficult to obtain and it's also difficult, uh, to keep. So every accreditation inspection is not a given. It, it's definitely something that, that you got to build up for. The standards are always changing and you're always, uh, you're always having to improve and to focus on continuous improvement. So, um, during our annual closure this year, January 8th through February 9th, uh, we had a bunch of projects that we worked on. Uh, we had lots of help from PRT and Public Works. Uh, we had project management, we had, uh, a lot of folks helping the zoo get ready for this accreditation. So we renovated the, uh, stadium seating across from the gift shop. We, we put in some new generators, built new fencing, renovated our rear barn, uh, which included new lighting and new paint. There, we hit every area of the zoo. And, and on top of that, the landscaping, the, the, the clearing, the mulching, the zoo was pristine in every way possible. Uh, it, it couldn't have looked any better, I think. And also we had a DEA out and put together relatively quickly that Brian Davis helped us with. So my hats off to all of you for your help, um, next time. So, um, when we started the process, it was, it was over a year ago. We started having monthly accreditation team meetings. And, and we knew internally, we had a lot of internal expertise that told us that, you know, there, we had some work to do. So we put together a list of projects, we created project managers, we put, we set milestones and completion dates and, and, and that helped us ensure that we got it all done. On top of that, we elected to have two mock inspections. So, uh, the city hired RSS Strategies to do your first mock inspection. And the second one came to us, uh, through AZA as a mentor, so Jessica Hoffman, who's the Vice President of Welfare at the Greensboro Science Center, came down and did an inspection. Both of those reports helped ensure that, that we captured all of what we believe were current, the current issues and that we put closure on all of the issues left over from 2019 and we didn't have such a ugly, uh, inspection. So, uh, fast forward, the actual inspection, the inspectors hit the ground on the 25th. They were here for three days. They inspected every inch of the zoo. And, uh, it was incredible, the, the work that the team did, every cabinet they opened, every MSDS sheet, if you know what that is, you know what that is. Uh, they were taking pictures to, to go back to their, uh, home zoos and say, you know, look at the Greenville Zoo and how meticulous their facilities maintenance shop was. We keep it like that every day, just to show. But, but we knew company was coming and they, they appreciated that. So they knew, they knew that, that we were ready and, and it showed. When they left, they, they gave us a, uh, visiting committee report, which, which is, it lists your achievements and the things that they see, uh, that, that would be concerns. There were no major concerns, so that first and foremost is great news. Uh, there were a couple of little bitty things, but nothing to worry about. We, we have until August 12th to, to respond to those. So, um, it was incredible accreditation exercise. They were very complimentary of the zoo, as I said before. Literally reading some of the list of achievements, they thought that our guest experience was outstanding. Uh, the animal exhibits were exhibit, were attractive and well maintained. Uh, the primate row was, uh, demonstrating best practices and transparency and primate keeping. Uh, they loved the renovation to the animal hospital, they thought that was a huge improvement over 19. The gift shop and concessions, they were impressed by the revenue generated from such a small facility. Uh, they talked about the zoo ha- having managed to, to somewhat balance its budget the last couple of years and, uh, how dedicated the animal care staff were, how professional they were, uh, all in. When they left, they said, y'all have a lot to be proud of. So, um, I, I give credit to, to all of the help we got, to my staff and leadership. And, uh, the next step in the accreditation process is a hearing I will before the commission in September, um, sometime between the 13th and 15th. And I will, uh, I anticipate getting some good news and that we will maintain our accreditation for another five years.
Thank you, Bill, that's right. Councilmember Gibson?
Thank you. First kudos to you guys for what you did, it was amazing, especially since from where we were when we were talking about this four years ago. We, we just had a couple of questions, um. If we still had the lines, would we have done this more or, and asked in different way? But our lion enclosures that we had for that had passed muster, um, for this inspection? And I asked, not just out of curiosity, but for, to sort of get an idea of what our chances are of getting another lion?
So, in two previous reports, um, by RSS Strategies and by Jessica Hoffman from the Greensboro Science Center, that lion exhibit was listed as an issue. Because we didn't have lions during the inspection, it, it wasn't listed as an issue. Um, I did have a conversation with them about that exhibit and the potential for bringing lions back and they would recommend that we not do that.
That's true. Yep.
But we are working on exciting things for the future.
We are.
Yeah, I, I echo, when I think about where we were in March, April of 2020, aside from COVID, we were on DEFCON whatever on zoo and it was a four-year time, Bill. And I think you and your team were instrumental, Parks and Rec and all the other staff for turning it around. You know, we, since I've lived here in 89, we've had a large cat of some, of some description. Some larger than others. Um, and I think that the, you know, the, the primary concern is animal welfare for that exhibit, recognizing that a large cat is a real attractive for visitors. The surrounding community certainly got used to the sound of a large cat, two large cats. I know why you're asking, this is way good. But I think taking your time and figuring out what fits from what we have there and what, um, what we can accommodate for the long haul. Um, you know, it's worth, it's worth waiting to fully evaluate. And I also, my sense is after talking with, with Shannon and that, that, you know, even if we said, yep, it's perfect for lions, you can't necessarily just order up a lion, you know, just. They're not lining up at the door, you know? So, so I think, um, you know, you know, you know the heart of Greenville and, and, and the support for that, but I, I trust your instincts and your pun intended, I'm, I'm picking the right animal for that exhibit. We're about to add COVID to Africa exhibit, which is an exciting time. And, and I think there's some good options on, on the deck.
There's good options.
Shannon's very quick too.
Yes, they know.
It, it was also, um, not noted here, but they're very impressed with the farmyard that we've designed and that we have it funded and that we will be breaking down on that in the not too distant future.
Thank you, Bill. You know, the work that you've done, um, is just incredible and the work that's been done by our staff at the zoo. Um, I, I, I had an opportunity to go through there, um, right before the accreditation and everything just looked beautiful. And, um, but I really do thank the teamwork of our city staff because I know how many departments participated in that, our project management team, Public Works team, communications team, PRT team. There was, and I'm probably forgetting people, so if I did, don't get mad at me later. Um, but it really is incredible. And of course, also the work of the foundation, um, they've been hugely supportive to us. And I think that just our growing relationship with them and how they're supporting the zoo can't be, um, understated either. Um, and they're a very important part of this whole equation. So, thank y'all very much. All right, we got a couple more minutes, we're going to run into the next part of the presentation.
Do they buy beer, by the way?
They did not buy, they did not buy beer.
They, they own the fish occasions.
Yes. All right, we got three minutes.
Three minutes, really quick. Uh, uh, RSNS has completed and finalized the government study, which was really taking over, a look at the entire zoo operations, their relationships with internal and external stakeholders. They also looked at the fundraising efforts and then put together what was called a roadmap for ultimately transitioning the zoo over three to five years to more of a public-private partnership government structure. And which is what, what you see in a lot of zoos throughout the US. Tara, I think you can kind of go through and elaborate on that process and the next steps.
Yeah, so we, um, this was a year-long process, um, a lot of conversations with, um, city staffs, new team members. And some of the key recommendations that came here and relevant strategies and solutions is, um, that a shifting of the government governance to a public-private partnership with a non-governing board would be the recommendation. Like Brandon said, 70% of zoos and aquariums across the country, this is the model that they use. Um, this however, would be a three to five year process. We talked a little bit about the lions and what the future looks like at the zoo. We're actually in the process of development, developing a strategic plan and a facility concept plan. And that will really lay the, the framework of what our exhibit space could look like, what we could reimagine some of the spaces to look like and provide almost like a blueprint for the foundation as far as fundraising. Um, what they also recommended is that the zoo, zoo foundation would need to develop a comprehensive fundraising strategy. That of course would be alongside the city with our support, um, really creating that stronger culture of philanthropy and positioning itself to raise, um, several million dollars annually.
Thank you, Tara. We plan to, oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Forgot about that, Scott.
No.
Sorry.
Um, so next steps, I think we, you know, want to obviously work, I can flag with the foundations to implement these action items. Um, we'll work with RSNS, continuing on our strategic plan, finalizing the facility concept plan. Um, also working through what those next milestones look like if we are looking at that three to five year plan for this transition. And we'll continue to keep you all in the loop on these items.
Thank you. Is Gal on board?
Is Gal on board?
Yes. Welcome back. We, I'm sorry, we will have more, um, if I could, just real quick, and then I'll go to your question. We will obviously have. to your question. We will obviously have more coming forward to you in August with, you know, bringing the plan forward. But we, this is the update, knowing that we're going to be on recess in August. So giving you an update before things start to come forward in August. So more to come on that. This is just preliminary. Again, everything's preliminary, wait till August, but this is our update. Yes, ma'am.
You know, this is an older question, but if we go back to AZA accreditation in 2029, that'd be the next?
Yes.
Yeah, we actually only had, we had a shorter time period between accreditation inspections this time because of the tabling that occurred in 2019. So
The official should be 2029.
That's right. So, and we're expecting, Bill said, in September, good news and not looking for anything like what we dealt with previous accreditation period. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Just some comments upfront, and the core recommendation in that study is about public-private partnerships, which seems easy, but it's, we can do it. If any city can do it, we can do it. But I would say here for, not the real effort hadn't been made, but it's kind of a chicken egg. We kind of need our strategic plan to go out and find partners. Because who would be a partner if the plans aren't, you want something people are excited about? Like that was the beauty of Unity Park, is that you could show people, this is what we're trying to do, this is what it'll look like. They want to be part of it. And as we get our strategic plan together, I think, I think the sky's the limit almost on what kind of partners we can bring in. And public partners, other governmental bodies, some private partners, corporations, people. I think we just barely scratched the surface because it's, it's aptly, it has all the ingredients of something that people would want to buy in on. We just haven't asked the right question, and we hadn't had the plan to show them.
And we're working on that right now. And when do we anticipate having the strategic plan?
August, September time?
September, yeah. So agreed, and working on that right now to have that strategic plan, which is part of this, which is why this is just an update today and not all the plans, because they really have to go hand in hand until everything is ready to go. So, all right, Bill, Tara, Brandon, anything else?
My pleasure.
Thank y'all. Thank you.
Way to go.
Thank you very much.
Back to the cage.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
We have
Ready to go into the second session?
Second session, motions, motion, so move second.
All right, thank you. We've got five items. If y'all will bear with me for a moment. Legal advice regarding position of the city on zoning matter in litigation, prospective contract for extension or parking agreement at Unity Park, negotiations incident to prospective contract for redevelopment of city property in the CBD, negotiations incident to prospective contract for purchase of property in the vicinity of Church Street, prospective contract for sale of city property in the CBD, and negotiations incident to prospective contract for parking in the West End.